Welcome to our regular meeting of council in person and live stream electronically for Tuesday, August fifth. Opening of our meeting. Reminders, the township office will be closed on Friday, August eighth for staff training. The Montague District Forget Me Not Club's 50th anniversary is being held at sixteen seventeen Guthrie Road, across from Rose Town Hall on Sunday, August tenth from one P M until five P M. This event is free and is for all ages. Live music, inflatables, a catered meal with cake and ice cream for dessert. A clothing drop and swap event is being held at Rose Town Hall on Saturday, August sixteenth from nine A M until noon. Bring your clean and gently used clothing to the township office until Monday, August eleventh, for a chance to win a hundred dollar Tanger outlet gift card. This is an excellent opportunity to clean out your closet, refresh your wardrobe, and pick up some clothes for the kids for back to school. The Forget Me Not Club will also be running a community yard sale at this event and has eight by eight spaces for rent at ten dollars per space. Contact the Forget Me Not Club at six one three two eight three eight four eight two if you are interested. The Ghost Port Henry bus trip and walking tour is taking place on Saturday, September sixth. The cost is thirty dollars per person. Contact the township office to book your spot. Our land acknowledgement. The council and staff of the Township of Montague acknowledge that this sacred land on which the Township of Montague is now located, and this meeting is being held, is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin Anashaabi Nation. They'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. To move by councillor Johnson and second by deputy Reeve Carroll that the regular meeting of council agenda dated August fifth, twenty twenty five, be approved as amended to revise three E amendment to open the bylaw and six F bylaw four one six four dash twenty twenty five, and to include seven A notice of motion. All in favor? Let's carry. Disclosure. Now at any point in time during our meeting. Move by depth of the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty five, the minutes of the public meeting dated July eighth, twenty twenty five, and the minutes of the special meeting of council of date of July eighth, twenty twenty five, be approved as presented this date. All in favor? And let's carry. Any business arising from our previous meetings? The Lumex group, please, regarding our fire master plan.
Thank you, and just a little introduction. My name is Mike Villeneuve with the Lumex Group, leader, headquarters at Peterborough. We've already presented the our plan, and here today I just give a high level overview of that documents. So the purpose of our master fire plan is to ensure that the community complies with the Fire Protection and Prevention Act, and any other legislation that is applicable to a fire anticipated fire protection needs. Want to recommend some strategies to protect lives and property by enhancing public education, code enforcement, fire suppression services. What else want to provide information to guide administrative operational and budgetary decisions? Doc, that's the driving force for us to build a document for you. So how do we do that? So we have a startup meeting. Down here, we remember the chief and went over what we want this document to look like. And I say we as that's collectively. I'm, I, I throw myself as part of the department when I'm here working on this document, so it's, I don't know, it's personal to me as well. So we have a startup meeting, figure out how we want this thing to look, and, and is there anything that we need to get out of it? So we will also do some stakeholder engagements. So we met with most of you. I think there was only one of you that we didn't get a chance to meet with. Member of council, we also met with fire chief and members of the fire department and the officers of the fire department. We also conducted a community survey on your website, which well to to collect some information that we can use to to go forward. So once we get all that, we collect the data and then we analyze it, see what, see what you're telling us, then we draft a final report and bring it to council. So when we're doing our stakeholder engagements, like you said, we talked to a lot of different people. There's the list that chief, we talked to verified dominant verified non gift individually, because there are long term members here. We talked to Deputy clerk. I'm trying to say your last name. So what did we find when we're doing this? Before we get to that, what do we look at? So we look at community demographics, the structure of the fire department, any legislation and standards that apply, bylaws that you have in place, any agreements that you, that you have with neighboring departments, whatever. Look at communications, whether it's internal or actually physical equipment, recruitment, retention, stakeholder engagements, emergency management, occupational safety, fire prevention, public education, actually doing, training certifications, performance standards, response statistics, look at water supply and your asset management. So those are the things we're looking at when developing this. We also look, we use what Fire Marshal's Office calls the three lines of defense. So it's public education code enforcement, fire suppression. And that's the way that Ontario is building fire services. We want public edu- education to be the number one thing. We want code enforcement to be the second thing, and if those two things fail, then there's fire suppression. So that's when the fire department actually responds. So we, we build everything on the three lines of defense. So this master fire plan has thirty two recommendations. You might think that's a lot, but it's actually on the low side of a lot of fire master plans. Some of them will have seventy five, eighty, a hundred recommendations. This is kind of on the low side. Each recommendation in the document takes following considerations. Is it mandatory? Is that recommend, is it, is it mandatory for compliance, legislative compliance? Does it require council approval? Does it impact your budget? And when should you take all those into consideration? So I'm just going to go over a few key recommendations that that I pulled out of the document. I think they're down here that I'm going to talk about. So this first one, recommendation three dash one, structure of the fire department between the fire chief and the public, or the manager of public works, and move that updated position over to the new facility. So that person is with chief and manager of public works. Is this mandatory? No, it's not. Would it require council approval? Absolutely. Is there a budget impact? Yes, there will be. And we're saying try to do this in a short term, so one to three years. That's why, why would you do that? Why would you do that? Administrative support for those two positions. Dedicated administrative support, really, and it should be over there. It should be close, they should be close? Yes, absolutely. Next one, recommendation six dash one. You have currently have an agreement with Mayor Phil Wolford, and it's great to have that agreement, but the way it's worded, it's actually worded that it's a mutual aid agreement. And it's, it's not, it should not be called a mutual aid agreement. It should be a fire service agreement. And it's, it's their document that is worded that way. So what we're recommending is that we approach Mayor Phil Wolford and ask them to fix their wording so that it's correct. Keep the agreement, it's a great agreement, but just change the wording so that it's you're actually doing what you should be doing. Mutual aid agreement is typically within your, your county. And those kinds are, so them being outside that, they need to be, it's, it needs to be a fire service. So is it mandatory? No, it's not. Does it require your approval? No, because it's their agreement. There's no budget impact, but it needs to be done. It should be done short, short term. Get, get to that document, name that. Next one, recruitment and retention. This is a big one. That you should consider compensating your firefighters with an hourly wage instead of the point spaced compensation. And there's a lot of reasons why, and if you read the document, it's laid out in the line. Is it mandatory? No, it's not. Would it require your approval? Absolutely. And there will be a budget impact. And we're recommending to do this immediately, get it done. Recommendation ten dash one, emergency management. We're recommending that you develop a program that focuses on educating your residents about the importance of having a seventy two hour emergency kit. And is mandatory? No. So if we require your approval? No. Is there a budget impact? Possibly, depending on what you, how you want to do it. If you want to provide them with whatever. Grab baggo, emergency management stuff, it's going to cost you some money, but you don't have to do that kind of thing. Timeframe, short term, so one to three years to get something started. Staying with emergency management, this is something for the whole community is to develop a business continuity plan. We just came out of COVID where all municipalities struggled keeping your, your operation going, but people were working from home and remotely. Development plan. Bringing back to the council for consideration of approval. So is it mandatory? No. Council approval? Absolutely, it's required. There shouldn't be any budget impact because some, it's just others, some staff members sitting down and developing a business plan. So it's really no budget impact. Timeframe, short term, so yeah, one to three years. Before we have another crisis in this country. Recommendation fourteen dash one deals with training. Department should dedicate some time to research, develop, and deliver a training program that includes proper documentation. Is it mandatory? No. Does it require council approval? No. Is there a budget impact? Possible. Depending on how far you take it and the timeframe, again, short term, so one to three years, it worked in them. And then staying with training again, fourteen dash eight. Department should, research ways to enhance its training program by adding a full time equivalent staff member dedicated to that. Well, the findings should then be presented to council for consideration of future budget submissions. Is it mandatory? No. But council approval, absolutely, because it's staffing and budget impacts, absolutely, because you're giving them staffing. And again, timeframe, we're looking at short term, so one to three years. That's, that is. And then recommendation seventeen dash one, asset management. Recommending that you purchase a purpose built records management system for the department. Is it mandatory? No. Require council approval? No. Is there a budget impact? Yes. Purchasing something and timeframe, we're saying immediately. If you're not tracking everything and have a way to pull that information back out to provide data for you. It's, it's really a tough thing for a department to justify something. So having a proper records management system so that you can input the data and then get it back out is very critical to that, so. That's where that will be all. So those are the highlights of the, the master fire plan. I hope you take some time to read it and understand it. Everything I've talked about there is in there, the findings and the justifications are there, so please take the time. I would like to thank everybody that did participate, chief, the officers, the firefighters, staff, and yourselves. It's very important for you to point this out, though, that you have a group of firefighters over there that are one hundred and ten percent committed to the department. And not only to the department, but to this community, the, the, the stuff that they were telling me when I was doing the engagement session was giving me goosebumps what they were telling me what they do. It's, it's phenomenal what that, that group of people do for this community, so. Treat them well and, and they'll continue to treat you well. So, but again, on behalf of the Lumex Group, I would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to, to develop this for you. And if there's any officer questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
My way of coming to this, thank you first. It is a great document that gives us, and I look forward to our staff, obviously, coming back with recommendations with us, yes, as well, and discussing with us to see how we can go forward. I think this is a great, a great starting tool for us to figure out where, where to go next. And like you said, we have an amazing group, we have a great chief, a great fire department, a great staff, a, a, a great ways to look at, finding ways to help us implement this, but I think it's a, it's a helpful start for us for sure. So appreciate it.
Very much. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So another by councillor Craftrey and second by councillor Bass, that the fire master plan presentation by the Lumex Group be received with information. All in favor? Carry.
Report of the Blaster, so our first one is from our senior founder. So a public meeting was held on July eighth, twenty twenty five to hear an application for zoning by law amendment. The intent of the application submitted is to rezone the lands legally known as seventeen twenty seven, twenty four forty three, from rural to rural special exception seventeen. The subject property is a forty seven point eight hectare property. That is the subject of an ongoing consent application. P twenty four zero three six. And the property is currently developed with an existing dwelling, barn, and two sheds. And so the proposed rezoning is for one point eight hectare separate parcel of land is in and that is a condition of consent in the ongoing consent application, that rezoning. And the need for the rezoning relates to both the minimum distance separation calculation for livestock facility at sixteen eighty one, ten road forty three, as well as a reduction at the separation distance from five hundred meters to three hundred meters, which may the proposed separate parcel may be a by quarry operation. All of which I spoke about in the previous meeting, but good for pressure. Based on the information provided by the owner at sixteen eighty one, ten road forty three, they calculated building base distance from their livestock facility impacts the easternmost portion of the proposed separate lot. The rezoning of the separate lot contains provisions restricting some sort of uses like living spaces within that one hundred and forty three meter setback from the existing livestock facility at sixteen eighty one, ten road forty three. The option is also seeking a reduction of the separation distance between the proposed separate parcel and a nearby quarry operation from five hundred meters to three hundred meters, and a mineral resource impact assessment was completed and supports the reduction of the separation distance. Since our public meeting on July eighth, there have been no comments or concerns or objections at public meeting. Members of council were given the opportunity to hear the merits of this application. And the, the application meets the intent of and is consistent with the provincial planning statement twenty twenty four, the Llanark County Sustainable Communities Official Plan, the Township of Montague's official plan, and the township's zoning bylaw. So provided that there is no opposition to the application, it is staff recommendation that council pass the attached draft zoning bylaw. That is in your package.
Questions? So move by councillor Bass and second by councillor Johnson, that council passed the necessary bylaw to commit zoning bylaw amendment ZB twenty five dash zero zero three, straight to rezone the lands legally described as part of lot twenty concession A, Township of Montague, County of Llanark, being part one on plan twenty seven R one two four two nine, known as the separate lands in consent application B twenty four dash zero thirty six, from rural to rural special exception seventeen. All in favor? Let's carry. Next is our report from our public works manager.
Chair, native council. We're starting with the over to the stone. Stand by. So yes, this is just simply for extension of the contract for supply delivery of winter stone dust. Sadly, we're thinking about winter already. So tenders in place for optional extension could probably do that. So that tender went twenty three, twenty four. There's a slight increase due to C P I that was written in the contract, so the updated price. This includes your supply, your delivery, and stacked, mixing the salt a lot, it's not on site, nineteen eighty two per metric ton. So we're just looking for council approval to go ahead and and approve that extension. Or option two, we'd, we'd have to retender the service altogether.
Any questions? So move by councillor Johnson and second by deputy Reeve Carroll, that council approved the extension of the contract for the supply and delivery of winter stone dust from Thomas Taverna for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six season in the amount of nineteen point eight two metric ton. All in favor? Carry. And now we have a report on wire road realignment. I want
So as council aware, we're beginning on this in twenty three. Relocation of hydro poles, scrubbing, clearing roadside vegetation, a rock wall that need to be removed, so that work so far has been completed. Balance of work required. It's just the widening vertical realignment of only a three hundred sixty five meter segment. There'll be ditching improvements. And then part of the agreement with the landowner there was installing additional five entrances. Those entrances, the cove to here already, ready to, little work staff will do those. There was hundred fifty thousand in the twenty five budget to complete this project. We felt due to the small amount of work left that we could just go out for, for pricing on this and inform a quotation process. As you can see in the report, the pricing received. So option one would be to award to the low bid, which would be Campbell's Trucking. Option two is we could not proceed this year and defer to next year, but there was an agreement in place that this must be completed by October of twenty twenty six. So it was in the agreement with the landlord involved. Any questions or not?
I just can say, great work again, just to keeping it moving and getting it, and getting this sort of completed. I know the residents of that road are enjoying it, effort from bus drivers too as well, but they're entering a little bit more space to be able to see everything else. So this is coming through fruition and kind of coming to the end, so it's again, just great that it's, it's continually done.
Yeah, vertical realignment is going to make more of a difference as well with sidelines. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, amazing. Feels good. Lots of air.
So move by deputy Reeve Carroll and second by councillor Craftrey, that council approved the wire road realignment and widening project to be completed by council trucking at the amount of seventy five thousand three fifty three point seventy nine, inclusive of non refundable H S T. All in favor? Carry. Next, I have a report from our municipal manager treasurer, Deputy Clark. Oh, that's update.
Thank you, Chair. So this is update number ten. It will be one of our kind of getting close to the end updates. So as you can see, the second lift of paving went down today. Lime painting is still required, but for the most part, the project is getting wrapped up. So I have included in the project some photos of the interior and just some of the work that they were doing. So our hydro, the ground tran, the ground transformer is here installed. The new pole out front is installed, everything is connected. Majority of the sod is laid down. I think there's just a couple of locations that it's not. And interior, they're basically finishing up mechanical, electrical, those types of things. We have the propane tanks, so we've gotten pricing for propane. And the tanks are being installed on Thursday. We're relocating our gas pumps. And that's happening next week. As you can see, we're still under budget, just about eight hundred sixty thousand dollars under budgeted, even with change orders and some of the work that's been completed. So attached to the report is the change orders to date. Some have not been signed and are still outstanding, but we really are wrapping those up. So again, a large majority of our change orders, a big portion was the Montague rock and getting that hammered out and removed. So all in all, we're in a decent financial position with the project kind of coming to an end. The biggest projects for us now to be completing is getting the office furniture ordered and set up and that type of thing. So yeah, hopefully by September, the project will be kind of complete, and then we'll be looking at financing and interest rates, potentially waiting for Bank of Canada to see if they do lower it again later on in the year. We don't have to lock in right away, so that will all come back to council.
Any questions, comments?
As you say, all of that rock looks fantastic on the new trail that's built, so it's, so we'll take that, that, that pain and put it into a good thing. So I'd say, and it's great out there, so. So it wasn't an entire travesty scene that rock coming in. So well done. That is another great report too as well, like the building is, looks phenomenal, and like it's yeah, like, like I, I'm not even gonna say anything else because it's, it's just everything is ready, so well done.
Just one question with the bank financing and all that kind of stuff. What's the latest date that we can wait to lock in?
So infrastructure Ontario is normally who we, not the bank, just because we can lock in for twenty years at an interest rate. So we have two years from the completion of our project, but we're paying a construction loan right now that's higher than the locked in rate. So we would like to see, obviously, I think the next is September seventeenth that the Bank of Canada releases the interest rates. So we'd like to see if it's going to come down point two five, or because they are talking that it's going to, it's going to move again before the end of the year. So I think my recommendation will be to council is potentially wait till December even. And see where we're spinning because that point two five difference in interest makes a big impact on six and a half million dollars.
Yeah, so it's going to be my point that we should perhaps not just wait for the first move by the bank candidate, but second. And if it won't kill us, then that may be the way. Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Lot of positive feedback from residents as well as those that just are traveling by as well. Lots of positive feedback on our building. Good job.
Excellent.
So move by councillor Craftrey and second by councillor Bass, that council accepts the public works and fire complex update number ten report as information is presented this date. All in favor? That's carried. Next is our report from our clerk planning manager.
Hey, thank you, Chair. The report that you have before you is, is pretty much a housekeeping report and bylaw to acknowledge the appointed council members for the Rita Corridor Landscape Strategy Steering Committee. So a resolution was passed in early twenty twenty four, but the appointments of Reeve Karen Jennings and Deputy Reeve Jeffrey Carroll as the alternate for that committee were not reflected in the appointment bylaw, so that's being acknowledged with the, the bylaw that's being presented this evening. Additionally, upon review, there were a few omissions and corrections that needed to be done. One of them was to include the traffic advisory committee, also the inclusion, diversity, equity, and access committee. While we didn't have anyone that was appointed to that committee, we, we've included it on there, and that could be a topic of discussion for council. As well as to correct the appointment on the Ten of Smith Falls Recreation Agreement Committee to reflect that it would be Reeve Karen Jennings sitting on that committee. And then there was a date change that was amended also. So the draft bylaw is attached to the report, and the bylaw is also on the agenda later this evening. Anyone has any questions?
Any questions? So move by councillor Bass and second by councillor Johnson, that council passed the attached appointment bylaw as per the draft presented this date. All in favor? It's carried. Next is our municipal manager treasurer on our council midterm report highlights.
Thank you, Chair. The mine's still loading because it's a rather large document, but so this is just a report for council for midterm, so kind of the first two years of being on council to give highlights of what's been accomplished, kind of where we're at in each of the departments for council review and consideration. This is something that we can either continue to do on an annual or midterm basis, or if council just wants to receive it as information, that's fine as well, but we thought that we would bring forward really just a midterm to say this is what this council and the team of staff have accomplished and what's been implemented.
All opening up to comments?
Sure. I think this is a really, really well laid out piece of information. I, I mean, it'd be great to be shared on our social media page and on our, on our website to kind of once again, just show the residents what's going on in the township, and it's, it's a great sort of like you know, lots of pictures, lots of everything else that gives great information about. So to me, I think, I think this is a great thing every couple of years. I guess it's a great idea. Certain in the end, just to, even just to talk about all of the great things that are being done in the township and how hard the staff are working, also really recognizes what our fire department does and how they, the heart and soul, what they, what they do in our township. And then, and everything else with all the activities and they also, to me, I think this is like, you know, we, we, we so in municipal and government as a whole. I think this is a really good way of saying, hey, like these are, this is what's going on. This is the good things that your, that your tax dollars are a work. So to me, it's like, this is a great document and kudos to the, the staff for like, like this shows what, like the great work they've been doing. So if anybody ever sits there and says, like, what does your staff do and everything else? Like, this is amazing. We want the accomplishments that have happened over the last few years and everything else. So to me, this is, this is amazing. And I think we should be posting this and blasting it out there and, and really being proud of, of the place that we are, that we are, maybe I'll get to represent itself.
Yeah, just I thought it was, it's educational for all of our ratepayers and stuff like that. And I just think it's a good way, it's like Jeff was saying. It's, it gets it out there. There's lots of times that people just don't know what really goes on. And if they can have a document that they can quickly look at, I think that's great. So thank you.
Going on that, it's just great to have the information out there. Again, you know, not up to date on what's happened, what's going on. This is a great call note. So here's everything that happened. Here's what's going on. Here's where we're going forward. So there's a great document to have and great job on my own side.
Yeah, I'd just like to continue with the rest of the thing. Councillors, that it's great with all the pictures. I've never seen this before, that we've had something like this and this is fantastic. Might love to see it as Jeff says, maybe every couple of years or something to keep everybody updated because I showed that to my wife the other day. I said, isn't this look good? She thought it was fantastic. So thanks very much to the staff.
Very informative for our residents as well as for council. Touching on all the departments, touching on our recreation committee and the work that they do as well and on communications. I mean, there are a lot of people that are into the social media and if we can get more and more following, that would be fabulous because it's the quickest way to get anything out, especially in an emergency. And I mean, I know that there are those that aren't using social media, but there are several that are. And I know some of them just haven't signed up yet, but it's huge. It's a, it's a very important way for important messages to get. So well done to staff on this and I'm in agreement with the rest of council for, for, so back we go here. Move by councillor Johnson and second by deputy Reeve Carroll, that council approves option one, that council provides municipal manager treasurer deputy clerk changes to the document prior to posting on the website and that council directs staff to produce similar documents in the future. Presented this date in relation to the council midterm report document prepared by staff. All in favor? Carry. Next is our municipal manager treasurer deputy clerk on our AMO delegation for policing costs.
Thank you, Chair. So we did receive notice last week that we do have a delegation with the Minister of Solicitor General in relation to the policing costs. We had discussed this at council previously, so not going to go into a huge detail on the reason why we asked for the delegation. So I think that we're just looking for direction from council for us to be putting, because AMO is the eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth. So it's a very short timeframe for us to get the business plan and document prepared for the minister to present. We have not been provided the date or time yet. So some of the, some of the three main points, again, you have about ten minutes when this is presented, so we have to really give a concise reasoning. So the ability to audit the property counts that are provided from MPAC, I think, is one of the largest items that we need to push for because the information that MPAC has is not always correct. And if that's what they're using to charge the property counts, then we need to have an ability to audit those, those numbers and those properties. The second item is that the province needs to release the freeze on property assessments back to twenty sixteen. They're charging us policing costs based on twenty twenty-five costs. So how can they each year do a cost of living on what they're billing to us? So we're stuck in twenty sixteen. And then the third would be that potentially they look at policing being charged at an upper tier level, similar to paramedic services that it's charged at the county and dispersed amongst the entire upper tier, as opposed to some of the small individual areas getting hit relatively hard with the change in the property count distributions. So a few options for council is that currently staff are not registered to go to AMO. You have to be a registered. You have to be registered to go to the delegation. So that's seven hundred dollars for a staff person to register to attend with council. Otherwise, staff can prepare the report and the speaking notes and, and send council on their way or have a staff person present. Or we advise them that they're not going to do the delegation at all.
I'll open it up for discussion.
One question, as you said, it was, we haven't got a time in that when we're going to it exactly yet. Is it a possibility if we were to spend seven hundred dollars or we, we put staff time into making this up that they may even cancel our time?
Potentially, that's always a potential with a minister, depending on what's happening. So
Since we were late getting in, I just wondered.
But we can purchase the, like, if you decide, if we got a date and time and you decide for a staff person to attend, we can register the date up. Like, it's, we're already past the early bird pricing, so it would be the day of.
Carol?
I'm gonna speak from a a reality. Staff is much more versed in discussions about this than ours town sources. We would be reiterating points that staff is pointing to us. So if there's further questions, we may or may not have the answers at hand. I'm really good at my job. My job is not this. So I do think it would be good investment to spend seven hundred dollars to have someone who is more educated on the topic than myself or I would say they went at this table because they do have the knowledge base on the topic.
Is there enough time to get everything sort of together and along with all the other municipalities? Is this something that we, is, is feasible and impactful that at the end of the day that that will, will work out in the end? Is it, if it's basically, these are all great points and it's great to try to bring across. We don't know if it's ever brought forward or forth, or if it has or has not. Just more along those lines.
Yeah, so, Chair, for you. So it's our biggest contract that we can't audit. And we have no, like, really direct say-in. So it definitely has a big impact on us. And I know back in twenty fifteen in the municipality I was working in, we did a delegation and they did actually do adjustments to it based on that delegation and those requests being reasonable and data-driven or information-driven. So we can always make anything happen. As far as the other municipalities, I can't guarantee that they may want to go to their council, get council approval to, to come on board with us. And so I can't say that because it's within a week or two. But I think that we as a small municipality can still have an impact if we go with data and information, which we have. We're not just shooting from, well, this is what we think. This is the information. This is the breakout. This is why it makes sense.
I agree that this is our biggest contract. We're gonna get one quick shot at this for ten minutes, I believe. And I think we should go with the best we have. And if we have staff member who, I think we do have several staff members that would be really good at this. I think we should take that, that opportunity. I'd be okay with that. I think it's, it, it's a quick hitter and we need to have our facts right there, right at your hand, not stumbling or anything like that. And I, I would hate to, to miss out on an opportunity there. Because I think we're gonna get our ten minute window and I, I just think, at least if we have someone there that has had that kind of data, I think would be important to us.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We did have the government help us out on this one, but we don't know that that's going to happen moving forward. So being that it is one of our biggest contracts, it could be a substantial hit to our, our tax base. If we aren't getting that, the, the next go around. So we, we have one chance, one opportunity. It's, I mean, it's quite half years. It, it's, it's a we, we should do it once, do it once, right? And, and hopefully it works our role, not only for just us, but for all the other municipalities as well.
It's, it's a minor cost for what potentially can be huge savings for us. And exactly, you've got ten minutes to do your pitch. And if they come back with a question that we can't answer, because we're only stumbling block is done. So I think it's a minor cost. We have the expertise, the ability to take them along with us. I think that that would be very wise.
I agree. Always smarter than your service, not another expert. So yeah, pretty smart person in the room. That's my lesson.
So move by deputy Reeve Carroll and second by councillor Crabtree, that council approves option three. The three? Three? As presented this date for the AMO delegation placing costs. All in favor? Next delegation is our municipal manager, oh no, we just did that one. Sorry, it's done. So now we're on to reports of committees. Move by councillor Crabtree, second by councillor Abbas, that council approves the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five and approve the recommendations contained within. All in favor? Carry. Move by councillor Abbas, second by councillor Johnson, that council approved the minutes of the Montague Recreation and Culture Committee dated May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five as presented this date. All in favor? Move by councillor Johnson, second by deputy Reeve Carroll, that council accepts the minutes of the Merrickville Public Library Board meeting of May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five as information. All in favor? Let's carry. Move by deputy Reeve Carroll and second by councillor Crabtree, that council accept the minutes of Merrickville Public Library Board Special Meeting of June first, twenty twenty-five as information. All in favor? That's carry. Down to no petition. So to our bylaws, move by councillor Crabtree, second by councillor Abbas, that bylaw four one five nine dash twenty twenty-five being a bylaw to assume a portion of virtual road into the township's road system for the township of Montague. Be read of first, second and third time and pass, sign and seal this fifth day of August, twenty twenty-five. All in favor? Carry. Move by councillor Abbas, second by councillor Johnson, that bylaw four one six zero dash twenty twenty-five being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an extension agreement with Johanna Janine Martins, the owner of land legally described as part of lot twenty-four concession nine, township of Montague, county of Lannard designated as parts one and two on plan twenty-seven R dash one two four nine eight. Be read of first, second and third time and pass, sign and seal this fifth day of August, twenty twenty-five. All in favor? And that's carry. Move by councillor Johnson, second by deputy Reeve Carroll, that bylaw four one six one dash twenty twenty-five being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw four zero seven zero dash twenty twenty-four, be read of first, second and third time and pass, sign and seal this fifth day of August, twenty twenty-five. All in favor? Carry. Move by deputy Reeve Carroll and second by councillor Crabtree, that bylaw four one six two dash twenty twenty-five being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an extension agreement with Todd Anthony Straight and Kimberly Anne Norris, the owners of land legally described as part of lot twenty concession A, township of Montague, county of Lannard designated as part one on plan twenty-seven R dash one two four two nine. Be read of first, second and third time and pass, sign and seal this fifth day of August, twenty twenty-five. All in favor? That's carry. Move by councillor Crabtree and second by councillor Abbas. That bylaw four one six three dash twenty twenty-five being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a development agreement with Todd Anthony Straight and Kimberly Anne Norris, the owners of land legally described as part of lot twenty concession A, township of Montague, county of Lannard. Save and accept part one on plan twenty-seven R dash one two four two nine. Be read of first, second and third time and pass, sign and seal this fifth day of August, twenty twenty-five. All in favor? That's carry. Move by councillor Abbas and second by councillor Johnson, that bylaw four one six four dash twenty twenty-five being a bylaw to appoint members of council to boards, committees and commissions, be read of first, second and third time and pass, sign and seal this fifth day of August, twenty twenty-five. All in favor? That's carry. The motion and notice of motion, that council directs staff to bring a report forward on land severances and the studies that may be required by the township, such as, but not limited to, environmental impact study, archaeological study, archaeological study with an education piece on why the studies are required and what other municipalities and other counties require similar studies. Okay, that's on the next agenda then.
Yeah, I mean, I just brought that forward. Just because like, it was, we, we've had that over the last little while. And I think there's been some confusion around the table too as well. I mean, I mean, I mean, this is very staff, we know what's going on and what those studies are and, and, and how they're being implemented and everything else. And I think everything is being implemented exactly where, I think, it should be to the official plan. But I think making sure that we have a great understanding of what those studies look like and what we're asking our residents and are they, are they also like consistent with the other municipalities and we're not asking for things that, extra charges to people that may be, I'm not gonna say they're needed, but I mean, it's, it's one of those things that we consistent to make sure that that's related. And so we have an understanding. So there's a lot of, I think there was lots of questions and and confusion with some of the recent ones we've had and, and we want to make sure, I think maybe it's best that we all get a really good understanding. So we know exactly what we're asking our residents to pay when they're going towards any type of development and everything else too as well. So maybe that's a question we get from our residents. So I think it's one that we should make sure that we're maybe understand a little more. So that's why I brought it forward. I think it's so, any thoughts? I mean, obviously, but, but also can we clear for staff?
You know, for getting education that we can get, I'm held to us to the council, so I'm most happy to know more. So I'm.
So before we recess, I'll ask if there's any questions on the council agenda from our audience. Online? So move by councillor Johnson, second by deputy Reeve Carroll, that council recessed the council meeting at six forty-eight. Yeah? All in favor? Carry. Carry.
Welcome to committee the whole in-person live streaming electronically, Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty five, immediately following that. Uh open me and my acknowledgement. The council staff of the township of Monague acknowledge that this is sacred land on which the township of Monague is now located. This meeting is given health is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin and the Schnabi Nation. Uh moved by Councilor Abbas, seconded by Reed Jennings. The committee whole agenda agenda dated August fifth, twenty twenty five be approved as amended. Uh added free and interest permanent application fee, planning fees, O B R T trailhead on Street as wrote. All favorite? Carry. Well, we have no delegations or deputations. So we have our board of the municipal officers, junior planner, C Michelle, second quarter, I report. I said that wrong.
You nailed on.
Did you like to try out?
Um so the planning department has prepared the balling statistics for the second quarter of twenty twenty five. Um and also included is some comparable data from twenty twenty four. Uh so as of today, six applications, or sorry, I should say, as of the end of the second quarter, six applications were processed uh between April first and June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Of these six applications, two were zone by law amendment, applications, and four were development agreements. Uh in comparison, three applications were processed during the same timeframe in twenty twenty four. Of the three planning applications in twenty twenty four, one was a consent application, one was a site plan application, and one was a minor variance. Uh so the total revenue generated in the second quarter of twenty twenty five was twenty five hundred dollars, fifteen hundred of which was from zoning amendments, and a thousand of which was from development agreements. In comparison, the total revenue generated in the second quarter of twenty twenty four was seventeen hundred dollars. To date, three zoning amendments, seven development agreements, and one subdivision agreement have been processed, totaling eleven planning applications, and a revenue of sixty five hundred dollars for the planning department. Uh during the twenty twenty five budget discussions, staff advised that due to their reduced reliance on the township's planning consultant, a reduction in the planning consulting fee line from fifteen thousand, ten thousand uh would be appropriate, however, since that time, there have been a number of changes um and some circumstances that have required the expertise and assistance and assistance, sorry, of the township's planning consultant, and and these include several preconsultations for various subdivisions in the township, one of which was uh has resulted in a submitted subdivision application. Uh contentious zoning amendment file required additional assistance from the township's planning consultant. Uh severance file where the township was required to appeal the decision of the land division committee uh resulted in a significant unanticipated consulting cost estimated to be approximately a thousand dollars, uh and the hiring of a new junior planner. My help. After the previous junior planner assumed a different administrative role with the township in early twenty twenty five. Um accordingly, during the initial stages of my employment, the services of the township's planning consultant were utilized more frequents, um sorry, frequently, to provide needed guidance and direction when necessary. However, uh the previous junior planners uh has assumed a revised administrative role with the township as the clerk and planning manager. Uh so they will be able to provide more support to uh reducing the need to consult with the township's planning consultant going forward. Uh so to date, end of July, not June, uh the twenty twenty five planning consulting fees incurred a total of nine thousand five hundred and fifty eight dollars uh and eighty three cents, and therefore is anticipated that this line, um which was ten thousand dollars for the year, will be over budget as there are still five more months remaining in the year. Uh staff are the opinion that uh the fees and charges by law should be revised to include refundable deposits that can help utilize uh, sorry, that can be utilized to help offset planning consulting costs if required. Uh and are currently in the process of reviewing this bylaw. Uh and so a draft will be drafted pencil in the near future for consideration uh with this recommendation and suggested deposit amounts.
Any questions? Very well worded documentation. Uh on our case, uh moved by Jim Reed Jennings, seconded by Deputy Reed Carroll. The council accepts the second quarter finer report as information, all favorite? Carry. Next one will be me. Our chief. C M C water operator Miles Greer, second quarter fire report.
Perfect.
Can we skip that one?
Uh so the reports are in front of you, um it's very uh same as every other year, we're higher on track in the fire department to probably be running eighty calls, which we normally run in a year. Uh I don't know how that ever happens, but it always seems to work out since forty nine years ago, so. If you guys can explain that, I'll go with you on it, I don't know. Uh as far as water goes, uh water is something, you know, it's a bit out of our control, um. Ali does a great job with the, you know, how to work our water stuff, um. So I basically have your questions on the report, if you have any questions about the report. Nothing. Always a very hard act to follow, you know.
I'm just going to make a comment, um as we'd heard earlier with reference to the fire department and the amount of time that they put into our community, and our report definitely reflects that as well. So thank you to your and you and your crew.
And I'll certainly move that to my crew, uh as um Mike stated, your fire department crew is very dedicated to this township, very dedicated to events that we do in this township. And um I currently, I think up to date now, we've taken on twelve new and on since twenty twenty two. And you know, I'm still seeing that dedication level, so. So I'm really happy to say that, that I'm still seeing that level at the fire department. But I'll certainly forward that towards them.
As you say, because that's that's evident in the uh in the whole Komi parade, where it was like, I'm on a U truck, I'm on a U truck. And the old duties that came in, I almost got that, that's that's amazing, like it's a, I don't know, we had those, I was texting, like, where are you, where who has these?
So again, yeah, Mr. McConnell bought all them years ago, and it was uh suggested by the association being past and present, that we run a couple in, but I'll tell you straight up, uh unfortunately, I couldn't make it. But I was overwhelmed with the people that we had, you know, off our department, it was very outstanding.
I believed everybody to fill the trucks up, it was crazy.
Yeah, so there was a few cars, we have built a bigger fire.
I had one resident where I was sitting across the road, watching just from from the rink part there, and he said to Abbas, he said, the only time you got up was when the Monague trucks came across.
Again, very, very dedicated group, uh happy to say that the foreign recruits this year just finished their level ones, and we'll be writing their exams in August, and I mean, I can't ask much more from them, but I keep them going in the right direction.
That's good.
It was great, and uh also got some positive comments from Smith Falls Council, on the involvement of the Monague Fire Department.
Very good, very good. I thought maybe we said too many, but.
Didn't say they were worried if there was a fire, how how well.
There was instance falls.
Yeah, we were right there, yeah. Yeah, we're very good at working together, Smith Falls and Monague, when it comes to fire, and and I foresee that in the future as well. Thank you very much.
No question. Thank you. Uh moved by Deputy Reed Carroll, seconded by Councilor Johnson. The council accepts the second quarter fire report as information, all favorite? We're Mr. Miles again.
Here he does.
Water, we still have it.
Water, we're good. Uh moved by Councilor Johnson, seconded by Councilor Abbas. The council accepts the second quarter water report as information. All favorite of that one? I I swear it, you guys just love having me here, just so you can write.
My gym comes, counsel.
Well, you did a great job then. Um building inspector, Inspector Jay Hamel, second. Is someone going to speak on this?
Do you have any questions?
Okay, so just read it anyways. Uh building inspector, Inspector Jay Hamel, second quarter billing report.
So it's low for second quarter, but uh Jordan had commented that it's starting to pick up more recently, but you will see with the change in the permitting from changing the fees from two thousand and four to more current, that even though the permits are lower, revenue is still up, so um we're moving in the right direction as far as working towards a more um net zero uh in the building front, but uh when the building permits aren't there, they're not there, but they have picked up a bit.
It's one of those things, so you probably can see that deals go where like in the industry, I think that all the tariffs scares and everything else is kind of they sort of pump the brakes on a lot of stuff, but there's lots of things sort of like in the ready, kind of, people are kind of waiting and and seeing, so I think, yeah, you're bang on, and and Jordan is doing a great job at digitizing stuff, which is uh and what was that comment too? Fixing like a lot of, and there's a lot of good stuff going on in the background too as well, so yeah, really, really, really good, so.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of uh things right now are just seeing what's going on in the next six months, and whether they can do it or with the doing like that. Uh moved by Councilor Abbas, seconded by Reed Jennings, the council accepts the second quarter northern reporters information, all favorite? Uh building inspector, Inspector Jay Hamel, second quarter, second quarter subject report. Any questions for on or about that? Moved by Reed Jennings, seconded by Deputy Reed Carroll, the council accept the second quarter subject report as information, all favor? Carry. Public Works Manager at Hades, second quarter, Public Works Report.
Chair. Quick update on a busy second quarter with other works. Give it up to you, so as far as road maintenance, uh the maintenance gravel is completed. Uh twenty two thousand metric tons of stone applied on the gravel roads of Richardson Monague Battery refinery. Uh line painting was completed in July. Uh we got all our signs replaced that were known deficient in the in the reflectivity report in the spring. Um the turnaround that we discussed at an earlier meeting on Hamilton Road has been completed, uh residents been notified of that. Um as far as brushing and mowing, uh that's ongoing when staff have time between replacing culverts and other stuff right now. Uh roadside mowing, the first cut was completed, I noticed today they started on the second cuts, so they're a little bit ahead. It was scheduled more for mid-August, but they started today. That certainly do. Um calcium, uh that was completed July third, it was kind of ongoing with the maintenance gravel. Uh second application, we're hoping for September for uh refinery and Nolans. Uh maintenance is always ongoing um with the equipment, the fleet. Uh salt shed, the concrete walls were clean and sealed, I believe there was a picture in the report. Uh it's completed by students, so substantial cost savings there on what we had budgeted for that project, and it's great, they did a great job. Uh rust proofing has begun already. So light duty fleet is done, we like to get all the uh annual safeties and stuff and servicing done on the heavy fleet before they go for rust proofing, the mechanics. Definitely appreciate that. Uh culvert replacements have have started, um sort of the smaller ones that we gave in house. Unfortunately, we have an excavator down right now for repairs, so it's a at a halt. We'll hopefully get back at it this week. Um the large culvert replacement of virtual did start today, the contractor.
Who's who's doing that?
That's going to be more, yeah. And it's picture there of the Pever Dam, it's ongoing uh ongoing issues in this township, of course, uh some of the hotspots this year, knowns as usual, uh Minto Street, there's a big culvert there. They like to block up McPherson and Van Accs in there at the airport. Have been the hotspots. Uh students have been busy, there are some activities here listed that they've been up to, of course, the grass cutting, uh garbage pickup ongoing, the flagging, it's a it's a great help when we're doing our culvert replacements. Um they did help with sign replacements, they got chief's hydants all abandoned, not around, they look great. And some uh wild person up and other weed control stuff they've been up to. On the topic of wild person up, the uh roadside spraying was completed into June. And there was a list there of all the roads they did in the uh kilometers. Uh so back to capital, I mentioned the virtual culvert, which started today, it's uh scheduled to be completed probably early Friday, if all goes well. Um Ferguson Tetlock Road was awarded to Sapporo, as council's aware, uh talking to them today, and they're hoping for a mid-September start time for that project. Um excavator we talked about, so end of the month, I did get a contact, I'm sorry, to get a call from the dealer, and they do have a shipping date that's getting finalized, so it is still on schedule for end of the month, early September. Um so into waste and recycling, there's some numbers there comparative uh from, you know, second quarter this year versus last. Um quite similar, the large item date, which got moved to June sixth, notice two point six nine metric tons collected that day. Um recycling, so Miller Environmental will become our new contractor as of July, January first, twenty six. Uh they have advised that they will be subcontracting subcontracting, sorry, uh Monique Township Collection to Tops Environmental Solutions. Uh so communication has started already between us and Miller to try and make that the safest as possible. And uh and communication, of course, went out with tax bills today to residents. The start of general operations, uh entrance permits are ongoing. Um approvals are ongoing, of course, keep hearing from Hydro Bell and Bridge for different uh projects. And uh scheduling meeting with contractors on these on these capital projects. And the twenty two acre park, of course, is ongoing site work there, which was kept staff by busy. Any questions?
Comments, complaints for recycling improved.
Sorry?
Hopefully the complaints for recycling will improve.
Yes, here's hoping, they've already, uh Miller's proven so far to be uh great as far as communication, um you know, I've already got a lot of contact numbers. You know, whether it be text, phone call, emails, they get back to you right away, so it's pretty encouraging, so hopefully that continues. Yeah.
The amount online is a bit unreal. And that's it, the biggest thing is, any that reach out to me, it's just leave it, they'll eventually show up.
Sometimes eight o'clock at night, I guess, like I sit there in my mind, what am I going to get a call? Eight o'clock at night, they're coming by and picking up something.
Fingers crossed.
Yes.
Moved by Deputy Reed Carroll, second by Council Johnson. The council accepts the second quarter public works report as information. All favor. First time manager, Chris Cote, second quarter Montague Recreation and Culture Committee and MRC C.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So the second quarter twenty twenty-five, the MRC C took part in. Two community events. One of them was CD Saturday. And it was on May tenth at Rosedale Hall. And this year they added a craft and seed planting project for children. We also had got to highlight our twenty-two acre park by hosting the Montague Summer Games on June the twenty-first. There was a five K and a ten K walk run, but I think five K might have been the furthest that people went that day. It was pretty hot. So there are a few participants in the walk. I'm not sure if there was a lot of running. There was also a really great volleyball tournament and some kids games. We had a DJ. There was a hot dog barbecue. It was a great day and hopefully an event that will happen annually. So events that are coming up where the MRCs are taking part, they're going to be volunteering with the. Montague District Seniors Forget Me Not Club's anniversary, which is being held on August the tenth. We've got Mighty Machines scheduled for October fourth at the airport. They're going to have their annual Christmas market at Rosedale Hall on November the fifteenth. And the Santa meet and greet has been confirmed for December sixth. As everyone knows, volunteers are, are vital to the community and we do have a small committee. So we're always looking for new members to join and people who are interested in, maybe they don't want to be on the committee, but they just like to volunteer. We're also always looking for great ideas for events and projects that we can take part in. So if you have some ideas, please let us know.
Question. Okay. On the Santa meet and greet, does that mean that's the night of the Santa parade?
Yes.
Just confirming.
You, you're putting yourself in.
Just confirming.
Any other questions?
Great.
No, awesome. Thank you very much. Moved by Council Johnson, second by Council Bass. The council accepts the second quarter Montague Recreation Culvert Committee, MRC C report as information. All favor. Municipal manager, treasurer, deputy clerk, Allison Braykin, second quarter report on stop.
Thank you, Chair. So as you can see, as far as hours, we're still relatively on budget. Public Works had slightly more in the second quarter. Again, they've been pretty busy and we've been pulling them in a multitude of directions. But it also includes April, which we did have some snow events still in April. And it seemed like the snow events were all on weekends. So other than that, we're. Sitting in a relatively good position still. Any questions?
Position is good then.
Moved by Council Bass, second by Reed Jennings, the council receives the twenty-two five second quarter report on staff overtime as information. All favor. Municipal manager, treasurer, deputy clerk, Allison Braykin, Budget Control Report of June thirtieth, twenty-two.
Thank you, Chair. So you may notice that the Budget Control Reports look a little bit different because we had a full overhaul of the financial software. Which meant all of our previous reports were deleted and we had to recreate every report. So that took some time. So if you have some issues with them, just let me know the way they look, but we'll try and do our best, but we have recreated them. To attach to this document and move forward. We're still sitting second quarters early, but we're still sitting in a good financial position. There's some notes here on some of the line items just for council highlight. But nothing really is standing out as far as running us in kind of a deficit.
Any questions? Moved by Reed Jennings, second by Deputy Reed Carroll, the council receives the Budget Control Report of June thirtieth, twenty-two five as information. All favor. Municipal manager, treasurer, deputy clerk, Allison Braykin, Quarterly Senior Active Living Center S A L C update.
Thank you, Chair. So you will know in the report that we've been busy with the senior active living center grant funds and. Keeping the seniors fifty-five plus in the community busy. So it included weekly chair yoga. We did an Easter flower arrangement, a trip to the Annie C to see Beetlejuice and dinner, sign night. We did coach bus to the deep and bunker with, with lunch, monthly Ugra at Roseville Hall with a catered late lunch served. There's some photos. We did Ottawa Titans game. Paint nights. That was in July, but so, and there's a number of items up and coming. So we had a thousand island cruise. We have the fiftieth anniversary this weekend, Shadow Lory Tour Lunch is booked for September, Fort Henry, the haunted walk tours. September with the fire pit barbecue for dinner, because September sixth is Montague Fire Pit Barbecue Night as well. Brockville Arts Center, so we have a senior moments comedy show and dinner. We have some game nights coming up to win some turkeys and bingos like we did in the spring. Weekly chair yoga will be back, Christmas dinner and dance. We got floor curling. Items purchased, there's going to be book club and a breakfast club. So there's been a lot happening. This is just kind of a high level overview for council, but it's been busy.
Think it's going very good, the seniors. Very good with the works being done with the staff. And I know as myself, being a senior, I didn't do it so many events, that's for sure.
Okay, no, I've been able to sneak in on a couple due to cancellations. So there are many with wait lists. Get out there and get in. Yeah, yeah. Being very well attended, a lot of positive feedback. So we're very fortunate that we've received this grant funding to be able to do the activities for the, the community.
We can keep going. So years from now, Gerald might go.
They won't get out anymore years.
Any more witty comebacks? Moved by Deborah Carroll, second by Council Johnson. The council accepts the second quarter active, senior active living center S A L C update report as presented this day as information. And you do a wonderful job reading all this stuff. Municipal manager, treasurer, deputy clerk, Allison Braykin, twenty-nine five capital works and grant projects update.
This is an overview for council. Ed has spoke to public works items already. And so. McLaughlin Road, as council knows, is converted over to Ferguson Tetlock. So the fire tanker pumper is here, fire boots are here, fire master plan was presented. To you this evening. The complex is on its last legs of being completed. The building, so the siding, soffit, fascia and eaves troughing installation is to be completed in September. The recreation, so the twenty-two acres. There's a forlo later on, but it's on its way. So we did the grant funding, the dry hydrant was completed last week. Yes, for that grant, the fire grant, so for the new washing machine, it's here, it'll be installed in the new building. The tourism is going towards the fiftieth anniversary party, which is free for everybody to attend and hundred and fifty free dinners. The environmental grant is the collaboration with the school. So we still have to buy the lunch kits to give out to every kid in September. And we did the free composters, which were all gone. We had eighty of them and they were all spoken for. And then to get a outdoor garbage receptacle for the twenty-two acre park as well. Senior Active Living Center, we spoke about the twenty-five, twenty-six senior community grant, some of that is ongoing as well. The new horizon is the twenty-five thousand towards pickleball courts, which is supposed to begin once the civil and site work is completed here. So we have a couple of applications in. We've been unsuccessful on a couple of applications, but we continue to apply. And try and get as much funding as we can to obviously reduce tax increases or use of tax dollars to do some of these great things.
Great job on South Blue.
Moved by Council Johnson, second by Council Bass, the council accepts twenty-two five capital works. And grant projects update report presented this date as information. All favor. Municipal manager, treasurer, deputy clerk, Allison Braykin, clarification on twenty-two six municipal election council composition.
Thank you, Chair. So on May sixth, the clerk brought forth a report to council as an update on the election process for twenty twenty-six. As she's already working on the election process. So in that report was discussion about the makeup of council. There were a number of questions and I did have some response from some council members that thought something was coming back in relation to the discussion. Council had accepted it as information, but there were questions. One was can you run for council and a school board trustee at the same time? Which right now would potentially be relevant because there's an open vacant position. So we've given you the information that for who is not eligible and nowhere in that not eligible is to the state of municipal councillor. So our understanding is that a municipal councillor would be eligible as long as they don't meet any of the requirements of the other items. That you don't work for the school board, things like that. Yeah, so. Deputy Reed Carroll is not eligible. So the discussion about the deputy position left clarification as well. So we just want to make sure. That everyone is of the same understanding. So. The options are to remain status quo, which you accepted it as information at the last meeting. So that would be remaining. Option two would be to change the election ballot to reave and councillors. With the highest, the candidate with the highest number of votes would become deputy Reeve. If that was the case, if you were to remove the deputy position. And then the other one is you can remove the deputy position councillors and then council chooses the deputy Reeve. Which is not really probably the appropriate democratic process, but it is an option for council. So during the twenty twenty-two noms, we did have three candidates running for Reeves, three running for deputy, and then we only had the three for councillor position. So really, we're just looking for a clear motion from council to make sure everybody's of the same understanding on this one. There'll be no financial implications or not any of the decisions because we're still recommending that you have one deputy Reeve. To sit at county council for the four years.
Are you, are you?
I think Jeff is a good example. He's got a whole bunch of votes and almost the only one by what, six votes or something? So you have someone who got a whole bunch of votes could have been gone. So for me, I kind of look at, would it be better for us to have a, this one big pool of us and then whoever got the most votes becomes deputy. So you don't miss out on, because it's a couple pieces in there that we lost out on. It's democratic. They, they got a lot of votes. And should that be where we are, where it's. It depends on votes. You know what I mean? Like it's, anyway, that's where I look at it.
Going off of what you're saying, I, I, actually, I'm just relaxed.
Oh, I was, I got, that's what I was saying. The trouble is we can. We can have two, two councils in here running for deputy Reeve or three. And if something happened, we've got a really big council. So you're going to be two, two people. That were in that position. I like the idea where if there's four of us or five of us or ten of us running, the public will pick the best one. By votes. You know, you'll go to the highest voter for deputy Reed. So Jeff, we're just using as an example, if Jeff was running, we're all running again and Jeff got a thousand votes. And the rest of us was less than Jeff would be deputy Reed and do the same thing as what he's doing right now. And if someone else got it, or if Jeff didn't want it, then he could pass it down to the next person with the higher votes.
So, so sorry, so is that how this works then is? If you move to somewhere you don't have, you have the Reeve and then councillors. Whoever gets the most votes automatically would become deputy Reeve. But if that person says, well, no, I don't really want that, then it goes to the next person or is that how it is? That's how it works right now. Right now. That's how it works right now.
No, no.
This is how it would go if, if that was the choice that was made.
All right.
Because other municipalities, however, like in Smith Falls, they put it out to the nomination one. But then others have it like an award system where one year, one election, it's a person from one ward and the next time it's the other ward. So they all do vary based on how it's put into place.
Yeah. So Mayor Fielder, deputy mayor, they appointed her. Because she didn't run, she lost as mayor. Then went into a secondary when they had the vacancy. And it was appointed as the deputy mayor. So how does that work? They don't sit on their. And, and their county, it's only their, their mayors that sit on there.
Yeah, in, in.
They don't, they don't have the.
But in our county, there's two representatives.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I misunderstood that. Okay. Because I just wondered how they had to appoint and then still sit on the county board. But I, but I think that one of the things that on the other side where they're like the status quo side of it, because I, I hear what you're saying on that. Is that the idea is if, if you're running for councils, because you're running to run on council for, for your township. And your, your, your other part is that you're, you're putting here and saying, no, I also want to be. On county council and take all of the responsibilities that that entails to as well, because if, if there's a big responsibility piece to that, to that county council. And I think the idea is that people have the opportunity then to vote for. The representatives for your council, but also your representatives now at that point, no student for positions as your representative for your county council. So like to me, it's, it's more democratic that you're, that you're having the ability that you're going to, that people get to pick. Their people and part of going into an election, part of going into politics is that. You don't win an election. I hear you on the, on the good people, but I mean, we've all gone through it. I mean, I remember Karen and I, we lost in, when we ran for council the first time, I believe you went for deputy Reed once and, and, and you, and you, and you were unsuccessful and that kind of.
That's part of. And that's, that's the prime point where I'm trying to say is we have two good councillors that both were put in at that time.
But are you saying that they're better than the councillors that, that were put in at that time? I think that's like, like the, the.
We have two councillors that were answered up in Reed that didn't read it, but were good councillors. But you're saying, so you were, you didn't live in the last four years because you ran very effectively.
So then you had two other councillors, in this case in Carolina, but I mean, this, you had two other councillors, then, then they were able to come into. I think what helps with it as well is if people decide to move up, you're opening up for other opportunities because yes, it's a great council. Maybe there's other people out there that are, that'd be a great addition to council too as well. So I think there's an opportunity then for like. If you want to step up and you want to go and there's, and there's a, there's a race for deputy Reed. I mean, I, you know, you can lose to win the next one or you can win the next one. I think that, that also then, if people are deciding to do that, it, it could open up. More opportunities for other people to come into. And I think that's, that's part of the democratic way of doing it. I think this, this way is. Trying to find a way to see if there's, to, to sort of keep it. The way it is. And I don't know if that is then as democratic as, as we're looking for. The other municipalities in our township, I mean, there's one that's unique because they, they kind of flip back and forth because of, they have the, the two different wards side of it. Everybody else has a, as a, as a Reeve and a deputy Reeve and they're, and they're voted at large overall. So I mean, that would be a big change and we'd be the only ones.
It's something we wanted to.
Sorry?
All it would be is specified. When you run for council, you have the chance to be deputy Reed.
But yeah, and I think the other side too as well is that like, I don't, when I ran that time, uh, and, and yes, you could pass it over. I mean, I. Like, you know, I, I got the most votes that are like that. And it was like, could you? But I, I wasn't, I wasn't looking to be deputy Reed. I was looking to be a councillor in that, in that, in that side of it. But it's like, should I? And then if that comes to me at that point, should I pass it down at that point? Is that, you know, like, well, people voted me as the most at that point, at that time. But did they vote for me for that because they also wanted me to be the deputy Reed at that time, or they vote for that just because of the way it was? It's, it's a, it's a tricky one. I think to me, it's, it's, you're, you're picking the position and you're picking that position with that other representative at your county council. Um, and I think that's way more democratic than I'm saying we're going to then go down the list of, oh, you have, you have the most votes. And and now, and now you're the the deputy Reeve, but it's not necessarily the the position maybe that and and maybe what you signed up for. To be sitting at county council and and then are you just taking that now at that point? You're like, okay, well, I guess I have the most votes, I'll be the, I'll be on, I'll 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 be, I'll be the deputy Reeve, I'll be at uh, I'll stay on county council. But did you actually like sign up and say, this is what I want to do? Like, when you sign up to be deputy Reeve, you're saying, I want to be at the county council table. To give my point of view and my sense and to represent my council and my constituents at that table. I think that's a big, 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 big piece of that. So I think like, I think that the talk of saying we're gonna lose people. I think that's part of politics as far as how you're changing people and how the change happens. I think that's a, that's a, I think that's, I think that's a dangerous thing to try to make a decision to say, we're gonna lose somebody. Or we're gonna do something along those lines.
That would still make you work twice as hard than if you were wanting to be deputy Reeve to get enough votes to do it. What do you think, Gerald? Do you ever go and hasn't spoken yet?
I I I'm sorry.
Karen, Karen should be pretty sorry.
I mean, I I I hear what's being said. Um. I know that on the, on this last one, we barely squeezed in with three. And then went to the the. Yeah, they were acclaimed, but then we went to um. The the option of where we had an application process. Um, I don't remember that happening in the past where we got just three. And um, based on the volume that came through on that application, I would hope that we do have residents that are interested in. Going forward. I worry about, I mean, there's no financial change. And I do worry that. Where Jeff says, the first year he came on, came in with the highest votes. Would you have a newbie who's never sat around a council table, so has no idea of processes? Also be a representative out at county council. I'm not saying you can't, but it is, there is a lot to absorb. But I mean, as much as I'm now second term and I've worked in municipal, there's still lots. I mean, public works is an expertise that I don't have, never will have. But I mean, we're all learning, we're reading our reports, we've got staff, we're going to. But again, to put somebody who's never ran before and happens to get the highest votes, is is that the best way to make the choice? Or is the best way to let our residents make the decision by leaving the position? And leaving them as status is. I mean, because very few are going with. Just the person, like I know that the separated town has where. They went to, somebody could just decide they wanted to do it, which is what happened. They did an internal council choosing and Peter got it. But the bulk of them usually have. Mayor, a deputy, a Reeve, a deputy, there's just a few that don't. So I mean, I'm not sure what exactly would be our best benefit.
Because you, sorry, all that just got, I want to key on a point you just said too as well, because you have somebody else that runs entirely. And they would be the number one voter and they're and they're a new person on council and then, and that's what it is, right? So it's it's uh, anyways, I think that's a good point as well, yeah.
Sorry, before. The other point too that you made were you, you only just acclaimed all of your councillors. And I think in the future, it's nice that there were a whole bunch of sitting at that table for the application process. But. Is it a trend that we are seeing less and less people want to be involved in over tier, military, whatever we call that? Is this an opportunity to get more people in the pool? So you have your councillor for sure, as opposed to. The three councillors are the afterthought. Like it's, you had three people running for Reeve, three people for deputy Reeve and three people just showed up. Like, that's not democratic either. So. That concerns me with the discussion too. It's how do you get enough people around the table that it's an actual vote? Know what I mean?
Well, and that that was it, like. That was the first that I can remember that happened for us to come that close. To not have.
Is that a blip or is that?
I don't, yeah, I don't know, I don't know. I mean, I, and then again, like, and then when we did the application process and we had multiples. It would be that, I mean, I'm on the optimistic side saying then we'll have people that want to run. But I don't know. I mean, I don't, yeah, I I don't, I don't have a crystal ball to tell me.
Jeff, uh, you're a first time with council, you've got the most votes. That could have been a hobby, that could have been your personality, that could have been a lot, a lot of wonderful things. The deputy Reeve position, you could go up against somebody who moved to the municipality, knows nothing about a municipality and. Loops. Uh, and then I'm just saying, saying, so there's always that possibility of having that, that person have no knowledge base. And walking in that position and and the, under the title of deputy Reeve, that's at the risk we're always going to have. Doesn't matter whether it's the deputy Reeve position or whether we have it as a councillor position with the most votes. And that's the reality of it, doesn't really make a difference. Um, uh, so that being said. I I think that having all the positions as councillor positions, you're gonna have more. You're gonna have more of a democratic process where the constituents actually get an opportunity to vote. Um, because at that point, you will have more want. So in this case, here we would have the three of us plus the three deputy positions. We would have six people going for four positions to fill those four seats. And then based upon the voting of constituents, they would actually put them in places. I think that's the right way to do it. I think it's the best way to do it. Because I don't know that this is a blip. I don't think that this is. I I think that there is less of a want to be in a municipal position. Because everything is going on. Um, so I I, in in my perspective, I I think. That uh, it should be a councillor position, uh, and based on the. The number one seated position, whoever that might be, I guess the first kick of the can, as it were. Uh, if if they would like to take that position, take on that, I I would definitely not put that as a position for, uh, let's throw Reeve in there. Um, I think the Reeve has to be a a hierarchy position and it should be somebody who has some. Um, experience. I don't think you should just walk in off the street and I'm hoping and and it could happen anyways. It it could happen anyways where somebody walks in, the municipality has a killer smile and everybody decides to vote. I hope it doesn't happen, but it could.
But honestly, it did happen. In uh, Leeds Granville County several, several years ago. But and it was actually one of the best things that did happen for that municipality. And it went on and and that person still moved up in the levels of government, but it's certainly a good change for them. But it is an anomaly to say that that would happen. You had, you know.
We we were very, and I want to say lucky, um. The the individuals who were claimed and I'm knocking myself a pat on the back, I'm I'm saying that I'm a a good person of good moral value. Or did I take the time to read the material and and try to make the best decision based on, but. The reality is, if three people that were claimed were not of that good moral compass, of good moral values. They would be running council. Um, so I again, I'm going to say that my opinion is that I I think it should go to four councillors, one Reeve position. And that and that's my opinion, just based on what has happened when we all got. Put put in and acclaimed. And again, I'm very, I I don't believe that I I was running for this position. Two and a half years ago, that I would have gotten in because I was an unknown. Uh, I feel very fortunate to be acclaimed. I also think that I I haven't done anything wrong by my view, my view so far. Um, but that's my, my opinion.
So just a tech question now, so we go to vote. Uh, does the voter rank? Is it a ranking way, first to the post, or is it just, I picked three people that I want to be councillors? How does this, we have four now, right?
Here's for you, you would pick four and the councillor with the most votes would become deputy Reeve.
So what happens if only four people that you go into that position for councillor?
We're we're all here.
We still have to have an election to establish a deputy Reeve.
So pick your top.
Yep.
Pick your top person at that point.
Your top person for deputy Reeve.
Four people you would pick, you would say, who do you want to be your deputy Reeve?
Yeah, you'd have to.
And then go from there as far as having an election for that.
We'd have to have an election, yeah.
So, I don't, I, to me, I think that this is, this is a, this is a undemocratic way of doing it. I think you're 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 making a decision to run for position and part of the politics is it's win or lose. We've had great people win, we've had people lose. I think this is a way to try to find a different way of of equalize, equalize, equally. A playing field, uh, instead of having the decision of wanting to run for a uh, a different position. And I think that's the biggest thing is that if it's, you you take that chance. Um, I mean, I I I do. Gerald, you think so, I saw the example, he's my solo example, it's like, I was on council and I took that chance to step up to try to run for deputy Reeve. I took that chance and I took a chance that I would lose. Um, and you know, and and you win, you win, doesn't matter if you win by one vote or you win by a hundred votes. You played sports, we all, I was playing sports, it doesn't matter if you win ten, nothing, you win one, I mean, it's, it's how it works out. So to me, it's like, this route is is, you're 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 taking away that piece that says, this is the representative I want. For that position at county and what I'm signing up to do is when I sign up, when you sign up to go in for deputy Reeve. You're saying I want to take on that extra piece of responsibility, that extra piece of what that is. And instead of saying, it's like, well, I could go down the line, because another, another example is you could theory. Of, and you know, like, say you you changed this and and a couple elections from now, you have four people running for council, they just want to run for council. And then it's like, you go down the list and it's like, well, then nobody wants to be deputy Reeve. But you you might have had somebody that was one deputy Reeve, so maybe there's a. What happens in somebody that goes to be deputy Reeve or or goes to be, and sitting at county council. That doesn't necessarily want to be there, because the whole purpose of you signing up for that position is sending, I want to go and be there. In this case, you're saying, the most votes, but I mean, that person may not necessarily want to be there, but they might just take it because it's uh, they got the most votes. And it's the opportunity that's there for them. And I think that's, I don't know if that's what people want to see. Uh, I think people want to see that they're voting for and what they're voting for for people that go to them.
There's the actual commitment as well for being at county council because you're every two weeks. It's not first and third, it's every two weeks you've got meetings. And if you are on additional committees up there, you've got additional time for meetings. So it can be time consuming for people. So if you do leave the positions, then those that have the flexibility and schedules to be deputy can run for that. Because as Jeff just mentioned, you could get more people on council that don't, that don't have the time to commit to our meetings. Any additional meetings by being on committees here, being at county, any additional committee meetings there. So, and I mean, in the end, the biggest thing for me is, I want to, I I would truly hope that any person that ever wants to run. For municipal position, does it for the true love of our municipality and not for the dollars. I mean, it's heart and soul and that's, I mean, we give, our staff give tenfold, our council give. And in the end, I don't care, I do care, but however it comes out, I just would really truly appreciate. That anybody that chooses does it for the right reasons and not for anything else.
The whole, the 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 themselves, puts themselves out there and actually says, hey, this is what I want to do. And I I want to be part of and and give back.
And that's, that's hard.
And you can lose really great, if you 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 got a whole field, you can leave and you can, and you can lose.
Absolutely.
You can lose a great candidate that would have been like your great candidate person for, for for that too as well. That's part of the election. I think this is a, this is a change talk, this this talk of change is is something that is. I I think we're, I think it's it's a slippery slope. I think like, we're we're sticking with a way that is also the way that's, it's being done the rest of the county. And it's not being discussed at the rest of the county too as well, so.
So.
Fair, sorry. Um, so just to kind of, it seems like there's a bit of split. I think that whenever you're talking about democratic process, um, for changing, you should probably ask your community as well what they're looking for. Um, because it seems like people, different people feel like the community feel differently. Uh, um, so you may, you may choose to not make a decision and direct staff. To put a survey out or get some kind of feedback, um. If we're talking about democratic process and what the people want, just put that out there.
Um, I think that's an excellent idea because with me being so new, I have a lot of questions. But I also don't want to do something, a pull that all of our rate payers do not want us to do. So I would be okay with something like that if you guys are.
Absolutely.
I just go out there and. Yeah, and if they think one way or the other, I'm good with that. It's, because I don't want to make a decision and then find out that. Everyone in the township goes, what are you guys doing? You know, like.
Why'd you change that?
Yeah, because I get that enough on the other side of the river, it goes, what goes on in Maryville, Wolford sometimes, that. I I I want to be on side with what the people that elected us will not elected me. Yeah. I I just want to make sure that if we're gonna do something, if we're gonna change something, or we're gonna take those votes. We're doing what the people want us to do, because what you said is a hundred percent true. We're all here because we want to make change, we want to help, we want to do all that kind of stuff. Not gonna want to be the guy that's sitting there going, well, why did you change everything? We liked it the way it was. So if people want to do something like that, I I think that's a nice way to.
Then they then, again, it goes back to they they actually a choice. Because I know when we were first acclaimed, there there was a little bit of kickback, they were not grilled. But nobody put their name forward.
Yeah.
So so it's kind of like, okay. You're not happy with this, but you never put your name forward. So I I think that's a great idea. But forward to uh, the public and see what they have to say. If they, they, whatever way they sway, I think that might be able to make a better decision.
And and I'm not saying that the survey is going to be the decision. I think it just might give you some clarification. If people are like, I don't care or no.
Yeah.
Then it might help you go, okay, well, the people aren't asking for it, so you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay.
So, option.
So I've drafted, um, the council direct staff to see public input on the composition of council for the twenty twenty six election. And bring a report back to council for consideration. Does that sound appropriate?
Allow the public to stop there.
We do have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Does that sound like the word we're thinking? And I can print that and make it all pretty. Do you want to have the movers and seconders?
Move, move by. I'm sorry, move by councillor Abbas, second by Dean Jennings. All that council direct staff to see public input on the composition of council, the twenty twenty six election. And bring back or bring our report back to council for consideration. All in favor? And you may give me some.
I'm going to make it, yes.
Municipal manager treasurer deputy clerk Allison Bray and Monty twenty two acre park update. Thank you, Chair. So some of you have been over to the twenty two acres space and seen our fully accessible walking trail. Uh, so it's about one point three kilometers in length. Uh, we did use the stone that was hammered out from the new complex. Uh, we had it um, crushed into three inch, which is the base for the walking path. And and it was completed with uh, crusher's dust. So it was much, so it's it's a little wet over there. We did have the EIS completed though. Stating that we could do what we were doing as far as a natural kind of space. Um. But for longevity of the trail and to really do it correctly the first time, we put geotech down along the whole path. Uh, we built it up a little higher because of it being wet, um, the approach and the equipment needed to do the work changed slightly. Um, which required more than we were hoping to be able to bring tan triax or our tandems in there and we dumped things down and it was just too soft. So, um, the works are completed. It looks great. We still have other plans for the space, um. Such as the Storytime Trail uh, with the school. So we're getting those boards made uh, currently by a local manufacturer. Instead of buying out of the States. Um, there's pictures here of the trail being built. Um, and kind of plans moving forwards. We would like to have like a nice timber frame entrance, a timber frame style history board. Getting the um, picnic shelter located over there, crime stopper bench installed, uh, and hydro installation. Um, so with that, we did uh, account for thirty five thousand in Parkland fees. Uh, what we're requesting right now is for additional funds out of development, the recreation development charges. Um, to be utilized, we are supposed to allocate for. We are supposed to allocate or, um, have note of allocation of funds each year of what they're going to be used for. Fire and public works are obviously towards the new complex. Uh, and with us doing a new development charges study next year, we do need to utilize the ones up for the growth that we've had. Um, so the recommendation from us at this time so that we can continue on, um, making sure that we're getting small feats done every year, um, to get that completed.
Um, we're, you need to go get sponsorships for some of the things we were talking about before, or is that?
So we need to get a sponsorship policy to council first, um, which is on my board of things to get to you. Uh, so yes, we're hoping that we can get sponsorships up on the fencing for the pickleball courts though, that will leave roadside. Um, for that, so we will be looking at that, but I want to get a policy to make sure the council and everybody is in agreeance of what that would look like and, uh, then get it on the fees and charges by law.
Cause I already know some people who want to donate to such an awesome project as the special one, storyboard for kids, things like that. There's already a few people that I've chatted with that would like to be involved in something like that, so.
Send them my way and I'll get you guys a policy to figure out that. So yeah, so we do, we would like to get the policy and get it on the fees and charges so that we have an understanding of that. Um, but that is the intent, yes.
Like I said, there, there is a, there's a seminar at AML coming up too as well, talking about, uh, working with partnerships and all that kind of stuff. And I might be able to, to kind of check that one out. Uh, the, the, the scene kind of goes about using your, your public and private, uh, sort of partnerships and how that looks like. It would be a seminar for, for us to go to and check out and, uh, and see. Um, cause it might be a, a useful, a useful piece. I mean, we can, we can video it and then show it to Ali to. But, uh, but anyways, and say, and, and Grace, did you do this Photoshop? Cause I mean, the first one I saw that it was like.
Well, that was.
That actually was not me.
That was my.
That was.
That was you. It looks awesome. Cause I went there looking at it, I'm like, I remember that. And I was like, it looks like it actually is there. It's like, I mean, everybody from the public looks at that, they're like, but they actually built that, like no one's out there yet. It's not there, it's just one picture, but it looks.
And I kept going on circles.
So, yeah, and that, yeah, that trail is, uh, it's, it is well built. That is, that is A1 for sure. So once again, kudos to the guys that did it, cause that was, uh, you know, I went for strolling with my kids and, uh, it was a great time, so well done.
Well, I was just gonna say, and it was best to do the extra now versus having to go back and keep fixing. We're, we're investing in it, we want to do it, we, and the extra uses we're gonna have moving forward with it. That's the, the link.
Yep.
The schools will, the school will use this too as well.
Move by Reed Jenk, second by Deputy Carol, the council direct staff to complete the walking trail, storytime trail, drainage plan for twenty twenty five year. And the council approves the use of development charges up to a maximum twenty five thousand, parkland fees up to a maximum forty three thousand to complete the works. All in favor? Municipal Works Manager, Treasurer Deputy Clerk Allison Brayden and Public Works Manager Ed Hayes. Entrance permit, application fees, planning fees, O V R T trailhead on Sturgis Road.
Thank you, chair. We just threw this one at you. Um, so the, um, county of Lanark is looking to sever off a piece of property, um, on Sturgis Road for the trailhead of the O V R T. Municipality has been asking for that for several years. Um, so we want to make sure, we don't have a budget for act dev and we don't put a lot of money into economic development, but this is a component to that. So what we're recommending is that we waive the fees for the entrance and any of the planning fees for the rezoning or the severance costs. Um, because it's our upper tier municipality, um, purchasing and installing basically an economic driver for us for somewhere, uh, for people to park. Cause we have had discussions about potentially building a parking space ourselves. Um, so if the county's gonna do it, I think it's a really minimal cost for us to waive these few fees. Um, and have them take on the capital project. Yeah.
I'll just chime in a little bit, cause this is part of the trails committee stuff. Um, and so that, that spot is literally right beside the trail. Um, uh, the, the agreement, basically agreement to, to take that off. Um, it's, it's really good. We had this meeting, uh, about a, less than two weeks ago, uh, just to approve it. And it was overwhelmingly, um, uh, you know, supported by the, the bills committee too as well. And, and Kurt Graves, who's the C E O of the county was like, said exactly what, what Ellie was saying. It's like something that we've been trying to get done. Um, so it's, uh, it's, it's, it's really, it's really exciting that we can get, uh, some movement on this. Right, right beside the trail and that's where the trailhead is and it's, it's, it's just really exciting. So I'm glad that this is coming forward too as well. And thank you staff for the great work that, uh, working with the county with this too as well, so.
Yeah, I think this is, uh, wonderful and, uh, we've been talking about it and having little ideas on how we could or might be able to make this work. So it's good that it's gonna, looks like it's gonna happen and we didn't have to do it. So it's nice to have work done that you don't have to do. Uh, move by councillor Crabtree, second by councillor Baz, the council director.
No, I guess it should not be you.
I thought I was talking. Move by councillor Johnson, uh, second by councillor Baz, the council direct staff to waive the entrance permit, apply fees for the application uh, submitted by Lanark for the purpose of parking a lot trailhead, the O V R T of Sturgis Road. All in favor? Uh, no reports of committees, no petitions, no motion, no motion, interest business or other business. Any questions? This is that, that, I'll update you.
If you were saying that you didn't think it was fair or democratic, having what is basically proportional representation for electing people. And you guys can't even get enough people running. Somebody did mention that you had some people running for different levels of government. If you didn't have the different levels, you would have had enough people running. They could have. You're gonna start micromanaging, and I don't like what you said of wanting to hear what everybody said. You guys have been elected to make decisions. If you're gonna have this micro managed, asking other people for opinions, how far is it gonna go? I mean, you can decide whatever you want, whenever you want, of, do you want the public's opinion on it? But you guys have been elected to make decisions. It, it's not a big decision for deputy reeve. And if you're gonna start cutting people out, as was mentioned, that other people wanted to run for it. Okay, if you want to run for it, you're gonna work harder if you want to be deputy reeve because it's numerical. It's the most proportional. Every federal government has said, when they get in there, they're gonna change it. They don't change it because they see, oh, I'm not gonna get as many votes. But you're right, somebody could parachute in, like P P, Pierre, oh yeah, he's gone to the second most popular place because he couldn't get elected in our, the Iowa area. So you're right, somebody could parachute in, have a great smile, promise to bring business here. It's a chance you gotta take that way, but then you're trusting your voters. If you guys can't trust them, but you're eliminating people that could run because you want all these different levels. I know it's only three, but, uh, you're, you're, you're losing more than you're gain. So that's my opinion on it. But one thing I, sorry, one thing I would add is, when I said that you guys have trouble getting people to run. Like, I think I'm the only person here from the public, except only this gentleman that is here, like. You know, if you don't have public participation, I know, maybe there's a dozen, maybe there's a hundred people watching. But if you don't have people involved and, and they say, well, maybe, but it's already a deputy reeve, I don't think I'm going along. But if there's a chance, like you said, maybe somebody doesn't want to be, but they want to run. Somebody's gonna try harder and beat the bushes to get more people out for that. But it, it's apathy everywhere. And to, to just go to a populist vote, like Trump, I'll say. It, it, it doesn't work and that's, you start getting clowns in parliament.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, I would, as I've attended most council meetings in the last twenty years, I think the way it's running now is a better way. And the reason, my reason is it, is the person normally doesn't run to deputy reeve unless they've been on council before and got some experience. They have an idea of how it works here, what goes on. They're not just coming, I think we have had people run and get in as deputy reeve that weren't on council beforehand. But this way they get a, a feel for it. And the council and the public gets an idea how the person's acting on council. What do you want him as deputy reeve? If you just vote for the most popular, as you, as you're saying, no deputy reeve, just the most popular counselor becomes deputy reeve. That doesn't mean you're gonna get the best person over there. Because you, and somebody on council might get a lot more votes than deputy reeve if you, what you're doing it. But this way they've had, most of them have had experience on council before they go to, to try for deputy reeve. Sure, you do lose a few people that way, but I think you could get a better representation for the, for the community. In my opinion.
I, I think it's gonna be an interesting poll to put out there. I think you're gonna get varying, uh, varying opinions. Uh, I'm gonna say that not everyone's gonna agree. Uh, and, and it, and it'll be, it'll be very interesting when we bring it back. Um, and thank very much for that, Tom. Um, on that note, I think you're ready for the adjournment. Uh, am I right? Did I do something wrong?
Any questions on the?
Uh, move by deputy with Carol, second by councillor Johnson. The committee of the whole meeting for August fifth, twenty twenty five now being adjourned at eight oh three. PM, alter.
Welcome back. So move by deputy reeve Carol and second by councillor Crabtree. The council resumed the council meeting at eight oh seven PM. All in favor? And that's carried.